All right, everyone. Good evening and welcome to the June meeting of the Three Lakes Board of Education. I'll call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. If everyone can rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. All right, we'll get started with Administrator's Report.
Okay, the agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School, the Sugar Camp School, and the Town of Sugar Camp via email, the Town of Three Lakes, the Town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Vilas County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
Amendments?
No amendments this evening.
Just as a side note, if any of you saw during your reviews that there was one at one period of time, there is no amendments, but for a period of time this week, there was one in there. All right, so we'll move into minutes of the May 15th meeting. If everyone had a chance to review, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't we have to take a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, we should.
We'll back up to approval of agenda. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? By us here. All right, next, moving into the minutes of the May 15th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Michelle, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? Motion carries. Okay, we'll move into the Treasurer's Report.
I'll make a motion to approve the checks stated May 10th, 2024 through June 12th, 2024, for accounts payable checks number 232400286, check number 232400319, regular checks number 129742, number 129830, avoided check number 129696, manual checks number 5679, number 5698, and wire transfers number 202300072, and number 202300085, in the amount of $791,626.2, and ACH payroll checks number 900042959, number 900043227, and regular payroll checks number 59354, and number 59368, in the amount of $576,117.3, for a total amount of $1,367,743.5.
Second.
Motion by Mitch, second by Michelle. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, do we have any public comments from visitors regarding any agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move on to the Administrator's Report, the Civil Rights Compliance Review Update.
Since we met last week, I did get the official letter from the Wisconsin DPI, from Jill Underlee, on May 22nd, that they reviewed the work that we had done on the civil rights compliance, and they have stated that we have addressed all of the concerns that were in noncompliance through the letter of finding, and that we are now, they are pleased to inform us, that we have been considered resolved, and that we are good. We will not be up for a review for at least five years, but the purpose of this is to keep everything up to date and keep looking at our policies and our facilities and such, and have an awareness of that. So it was very nice to get the official word that we are, we are done.
And thank you for everyone's hard work on getting that together and putting us in a good place. Any questions? Okay, new business, July meeting dates?
Okay, the July meeting date will be on July 17th at 6 o'clock. It will be a regular meeting time in the Board of Education room at the Three Lakes Building. We do not need a motion. The, are you okay with me going into the second piece?
Yep, we'll go for Board Administration and Staff Retreat.
Correct. We always set the Board Administration Staff Retreat at this meeting. We're looking into the August dates. I had listed some potential dates, but I do know that August 1st, 2nd, and 5th are not available for Josh, so I would suggest if we could eliminate those dates and instead look at August 7th, August 8th, or August 9th, and see what your availability is for those dates. Maybe that could make it easier. That would be a Wednesday, a Thursday, or a Friday. We've been, the last few years, we've been holding it in the Elementary, LMC, and it's been about a half a day process. I think that it's up for discussion as to, do you want to do it at the beginning of the day, the end of the day? And also, we can even talk about the timeframe if we want it to be shorter or look a little differently. I would say after we determine what the day is, we could talk about that for a few minutes. Friday works best for me with my, Friday, August 9th.
How is that for others? Is that okay, Michelle?
Yeah.
Mitch is okay?
Yeah.
Josh?
That should be fine.
Okay. Alicia?
Is there a possibility of doing it, is there a purpose for the lunch timeframe?
No, we can, we can adjust that too, if it works better for you. I'm completely open to the time.
I don't know about anyone else. My preference would be early that day.
Get it started right in the morning and be winding up? What about the rest of you?
I don't know if it ever worked.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Okay, so let's nail down a time. How early is early? Because I know my early is kind of like Alicia's early, but...
5:30.
Some people don't appreciate that. I think a lot of us are very early. Like an 8 o'clock or 8:30?
8 o'clock is fine for me. I can go earlier. I can whatever.
How about 8 o'clock? I think that would be appealing to staff members, and Steve, you?
I'm good. Time might not really get there.
We can call him.
You still get around to golfing after.
All right, well then I think we would need to entertain a motion for the date and the time of the...
8 to noon, are we thinking?
I would say 8 to noon. Our goal would be to wrap up sooner.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to set these staff, Board Administration Staff Retreat for Friday, August 9th at 8:00 AM.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Terry, did you want further discussion on your context?
Yes, well Mitch hasn't been there, and you weren't there this past year either. We've had the framework where we come together, and then we would have an icebreaker, and we review the long-range plan and the annual goals. Two years ago, it was a bigger meeting because we had to set the new five-year plan. I can tell you in advance that this year, we're of course looking for feedback from staff and our few community members and administration, of course, and the Board, but it's not going to be significantly different. We have goals very much in place that we're working on, and they're in the continuation process, so I really don't want to steer too far from what we're doing. We've got quite a plan attached to it. I do think because of that, we could eliminate some of the preliminary. I think we could scale it down a little bit and save some time, not to, you know, make it too pared back and take away from the purpose. It is important to hear what the thoughts are of the people that are attending and giving us their time to provide that feedback, but I do think we could somewhat manage it a little bit more efficiently, and I just thought maybe some of you had some thoughts on that as well.
I think that's a great idea, because I think sometimes, I feel like we sometimes spend time reviewing what we already know.
What we know, kind of rehashing.
Yes, and so I think we've... Correct, yeah, so I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I think if we can keep to that frame of mind, that we could easily take an hour off of the morning, just knowing that in advance, and then getting the information to use if you want to be reviewing in-depth the long-range plan or last year's goals, you know, you will have that to look at, but they're going to really be built upon that. Very good. Well, thank you for that, and I think we will open it up for a little further discussion. I would, I would hope that if not at the beginning, at the end of our session, we could come together and say, how did it feel? Was this the direction we want to go? And kind of set the course for going forward. That's what I have on that. Thank you.
And maybe on your, you know, whoever you select, or even the, you know, all the staff, if you want to put it forward and say, hey, if we were to refresh this, what would, what would staff's ideas be? Might be able to get a little broader ideas, give people some time to think about it.
We will do so.
Right. All right, next we move into consider approval of Personnel Report of New Hires and Resignations.
All right, for our Personnel Report, hirings, we have hired Katie Pitlick for the Three Lakes Elementary and Special Education Secretary, and the resignations, I have the report, are Jen West for Junior High Volleyball, Betsy Krasinski for Head Volleyball Coach, Bethany Puffer for Band and Music, Katie Botnick from Library Media Specialist, and Barb Strand, Paraprofessional.
Has there been any movements on social media or putting out to get interest in those positions?
Yes, there has. It's been posted on Weekend, it's been on social media, and some of the positions, the teacher positions were posted in the paper. I've already, as of today, we were able to fill a couple of the positions that are replacing Mrs. Strand for one, and who else do I have there? Bethany Puffer for Music, we're in the process of interviewing right now. On the coaching, I don't have updates on that right, right at this point, but we did hire some paraprofessionals today.
Any other questions from the Board? I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the Personnel Report as presented.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, subject by Stacy. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we move into consider the WIAA 9 to 12 Membership Renewal for the 2024-2025 school year.
Well, Phil and Justin are both not present this evening, but the WIAA has gone to a totally digital version, and so what Phil and I will do is sit down and fill it out together, and then I will sign on behalf of the district. It can be the district administrator or the Board Representative, but we have to formally have our, it come before you and say that yes, we are still going through and becoming a member. We are part of the membership for the 2024-25 school year, and with that motion and approval, then we can go ahead and send that in.
Any questions, concerns? Okay, when ready, we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to renew the WIAA 9 to 12 Membership for 2024 through 2025 School Year.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Ms. Krasinski, consider revision of the 2024-2025 Elementary Handbook.
Okay, so you should have two different copies. It looks like a lot. There's really not that many language changes. We're doing formatting changes. Last year, Jen put together Junior High High School, so we're going to use that same format so that they kind of follow the same process and procedure and look the same. So I will run through the one that you have, that the first page says cover page to be filled with all the comment notes on. I'm just going to go through one at a time. We went from, the old one had seven sections, two main sections, and then addendum, addendum, addendum. That had kind of been added over the years. So you had to go from attendance, for instance, it would be in the general information, then it would be in the policy information, then it would be in the school rules information. So you're reading this here, and then it's in another section, so we're combining those all together. So that's a lot of, when you see a policy change in here, it's not, any wording, it's just where we're putting it. So obviously, the cover page and the table of contents will be completed once language is approved. Jen has graciously agreed to go and do the formatting on this, so I used her version, but I'm sure it's not correct, so she'll get that cleaned up so that it looks all professional and the spacing is all done right. Section 1 on Page 2, general information, this is our first section, that's not a change. We had a general information section. I added the questions, concerns, process, the educational philosophy, the mission statement. Those are all from the 712 Handbook verbatim, so that's not new language for the district, just for our handbook. The introduction was combined from Page 1 of our prior handbook. There were three little clauses before the handbook even started. I don't know why they were there from years ago, but the first is that welcome piece, that's fine. That's just in the intro. The nondiscrimination policy is the new language that Terry gave us to use in all of these, so that's current. Then the nondiscrimination complaint procedure, that's moved from Section 4, which was policy, so it's going up where the other nondiscrimination stuff is, instead of just staying in a policy section. All right? Any questions on that so far? Okay, then where it says absences, we're starting, this is all from the old handbook, nothing's changed. So the first one you'll see with a change is adult school visitors on Page 5. That's just moved from Page 1. Again, this clause was by itself for some reason before the handbook even started, so we're just putting it in with all the other general information. Language is not different. And then on Page 6, again, that's where attendance starts, the policy. The enforcement piece is moved from Section 4, which was our policy section. We eliminated Section 4, as I mentioned before. Okay, and then again on Page 7, there's another attendance piece there. Legal excuse policy also moved from Section 4, so all the attendance stuff is together. No changes on Page 8 or 9. Page 10, harassment policy is just a move again from Section 4 that we eliminated. No language changes. Page 11, homework policy also moved from Section 4. There is a language change in that section. We're asking, Todd and I are asking for an elimination of, there was recommended minutes in there, and that goes back probably a couple decades. We're just trying to make this more with best practice. That's not, we don't want people thinking there's required minutes of homework. Some classes you may have that, and the teachers will communicate that. Other classes, there may not be, it might be, it's just not uniform, so we're not going to have general guidelines there. That's what we're asking in that part. Does anyone have comment or question on that?
I would agree. If it's not, if it's not something that applies to everybody, then it shouldn't be in a general document.
Very good. On Page 12, hot lunch program. This is, there's a language change there, it's a change in practice. If using a credit card payment is made online only through Infinite Campus, they don't take those in the offices anymore. It's only done via the portal. And then money can be turned into the, we're exchanging kitchen for office. We don't turn money into the kitchens in either school or to the classroom teacher in the morning. So cannot really, a philosophy change, just how we're doing things, how they've been done the last few years. Page 13, no pages, no, no other changes to Page 12. Page 13, locker policy is just moved from the policy section that we eliminated, no language change. Math advanced placement, this was in its own section, presumably because it was moved, or because it was added several years back after the handbook was already in place. So again, it's just in general information, no language change. We did update that last year, the actual procedure. Page 15, this is just a heading change, photography slash images. Change heading from photography policy because video is mentioned in there as well, so that's just a little nuanced piece. Any questions? I'm going really fast here. Good, okay. Page 16, pupil interviews policy. This is just a move from Section 4, our policy section again. Under retention, also, this was moved from Section 7 with that math policy. No changes there in language or practice. Page 17, school counseling. This was already, we had a school counseling section that had two lines in it, so we're revamping that. This heading was on Page 8 of the prior handbook with very limited language. For consistency, we took the language from the 712 Handbook, and then we added that last sentence in red to reflect to the practice at the elementary level, in addition to the general school counselor philosophy. We didn't have a good explanation of school counseling in the handbook that we're using.
This is very good, Steve. That, that does really clarify.
Any questions on that one? Because that is, I guess that's probably the most language we've had in here. I mean, it is right from 712, other than the last sentence. Okay, Page 18, weapons policy is just moved from the eliminated section. All right, then we get to Section 2, school rules. We're asking to eliminate, the code of conduct developed by the district committee will be followed in conjunction with the student handbook. That's before I was here, so I don't know what it refers to. It's origination language, I guess, that we're just eliminating because we don't have those committees at this point. Page 19. The last two lines in the section on school code of conduct. School code of conduct applies to all students in grades 4K through, I'm asking change 12 to 6. I don't know what's in, I don't, I don't think they refer to school code of conduct in the 712 Handbook, but it's only in this handbook, so it should apply to just 4K through 6 here. And then we don't have removal procedures available in the office. I don't know if that was a written document at some point, but it's, it doesn't exist anymore. So we want to eliminate that, so people don't ask for it. The principals in each building communicate what the removal process is to their teachers each year, so that's not necessary, I guess. Otherwise, you'd be changing it every time you changed a leadership position, I think. Page 20, no changes. Page 21, again, just a modernization. All drivers shall use discipline referral forms to report misconduct to the building principal. We don't have a discipline referral form. They usually either come in and tell us face-to-face or by text or phone call. I don't think, there's no high school, I don't think the high schools using paper discipline forms anymore.
I don't believe so, no. It's verbal report.
So they don't exist, so just eliminate that, please.
Is there any legal reasons that we need written documentation?
I think there is written documentation, because then the principal follows through with the discipline, and it goes into our Infinite Campus system.
Okay.
It's just not up.
Any contact from a bus driver, we either take notes or we put in, if there's an action or a discipline action, we put it in Infinite Campus.
Okay.
20, oops, that's 21. 21's done. 22, no changes. Page 23, dress code, we never had shirt camp in here for some reason, and we never caught it, so apparently shirt camp never had a dress code.
Thank goodness we caught that.
On Page 24, this has been a discussion every year in our building, and Todd's building doesn't have this, I don't think. Students are required to wear shoes or sandals with socks. It was always sandals, why sandals with socks? That's so goofy. I think in talking to some veteran teachers when I started, it was the wood chips on the playground, when those were added, they would get jammed up, and people would come in with bloody feet and stuff, so I just, we're going to take it out because it seems ridiculous, and then we'll, we'll address any, any strange shoes as a safety issue within that protocol, rather than having separate language. I don't want the kids not to be able to wear sandals if they want to wear sandals. So I, now that the teaching staff has all changed over, I shouldn't say this, I don't know. I mean, it's just something that the veteran teachers wanted to keep, and now it's not that big of an issue, so I ask you to eliminate that unless someone really wants that in there. Page 25, no changes. Page 26, no changes. Page 27, the use of technology agreement was in its own section, so we just moved that into this part, because this is also basically school rules and practices they should be following. And then Page 28, special ed was always in its own section. This referral process, I should say, was in its own section. Mrs. Volk took a look at it and modernized the language in there. So there's quite a bit of wording changes there. I can try to answer questions if there are any, but...
Steve, what's facsimile products in under tobacco?
Yeah, yeah, that's what Todd asked. A facsimile is just like a copy, a rough copy, so like a, in the weapons policy, I think that wording is in there too, like any look-alike, so a facsimile would be a look-alike. I can change that wording if you want that changed in the spots it appears. Just, it's always been in there.
Is that like the candy cigarettes that when I was a kid there was? I don't even know.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm like, what is that?
Where, what's, where is that one?
Under tobacco, 27.
School policy and state law prevents minors from purchasing these products, they being... Facsimile products are now, yeah, so anything that looks like a cigarette? So candy cigarettes would be one.
Or if kids made paper cigarette.
Yeah, anything like that. And that, I don't know. I've never had, of all the things in here, we've probably had instances of kids violating that one. I've never, facsimile weapons, yes, but tobacco, no.
I think we use the word fake now versus copy.
Do you want, okay, so, so Todd asked me what facsimile weapons were too, so I, we can change the word, if you want to change the word in those two spots, we can change it to look-alike. Or replica, yeah.
Look-alike slash replica.
Is that what you guys want to do? I'm fine, we're fine with that, right?
I mean, if an elementary principal has to ask the question, like, I feel like, I feel like parents are going to ask, like, what is this? Yeah, it's a term that's, yeah.
That's the fax machine.
Are we, are we copying them from the copy machine?
Maybe, or just too young, Todd. I thought, man, how come he doesn't know what that means? Okay, we will change.
Apparently, we're all too young.
Kind of knew it was this.
We'll, so note that we'll change that to look-alike slash replica in both the weapons section. Well, so note that we'll change that to look alike slash replica in both the weapons section. Let me make sure I get this right. The heading is what?
I think we can double check. It actually has it in DPI language too, the actual, like in board policy and the.
Weapons policy.
Exact verbiage.
This says look alike. Okay, well.
Fire correctly.
We'll, we'll look at that and make the change on any spots where the word facsimile is.
Imitation?
Imitation.
Imitation, okay. All right. Special ed referral process. Anything there? I tried to find a board policy on special ed referral process and I could not locate one. So my assumption then was that we don't have one, so this probably is the only policy we have on referral.
Right away it says, the district conducts monthly child fine screenings for children ages three years. And then it goes back to zero months to five years and eleven.
Three years, zero months being one age, so three years exactly.
Oh, to five years, oh, okay, gotcha. Oh, okay, I was thinking that. That's just an off syllable.
This covers sugar camp as well, though. Um, there is not, it's, should contact Three Lakes Elementary?
That's just, cause it carries out list to there.
Okay. So does she actually come to sugar camp to do the screening? Is that anywhere else where there's clarity as far if you say contacting Three Lakes Elementary? For the screening, but it doesn't clarify, like it just says screenings are conducted within the course of the school day? Could you add in at assigned school?
Well, it is on like the website, on the calendars. So we have a section in there that defines a child finds screenings. And then on the calendar days, it's, but then that was, there's. They're defined as to sugar camp in Three Lakes sometimes over there.
I think in certain instances. I mean, we can, we can add that they would be in respective buildings, but I think in certain instances, they are. Over there, just depending on what the, the need is for the student. Or the staffing, you know, if, if it involves like speech and language and hard of hearing or something like that, it might be, the meeting might be over there, I guess. But we could.
Is that, is that the same? Cause it's actually in the first par, at the end of the first paragraph too. It says, a request may be made by contacting director of special education.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I saw that too.
Don't know that it needed at the end of two paragraphs. You can maybe remo, I, I would say if anything, maybe remove it at the end of the first paragraph and just keep. In the second.
About removing this here because it's already mentioned.
But maybe use the language from the first one, because then at least it gives you a person to contact.
They would just call me because I had Carrie's schedule.
Okay.
But this meetings would be with a child.
So do we have a?
I think I'd rather leave the one that's in the first paragraph.
First paragraph?
And we'll eliminate the one that's starting with to schedule a screen, parents should contact the Three Lakes Elementary office at the phone number. And then stopping at the end of that sentence.
Eliminate that one?
Just that one sentence at the bottom of twenty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, um. On twenty-nine, we would update the instructional staff once we have those all in place and then the. I don't know why this says two on the back, but the last page of the handbook and acknowledgement page just would replace. The old page twenty-five. Okay, any other questions? Anything to add, Todd?
Steve, let's make sure we update under the school admin and staff. Um, we don't have Nikki listed, so we should add now Katie Pitlick. And we should eliminate, or it has Carrie Eisen in it, should say Nikki Maney.
So that whole last, the whole staffing part's gonna be up there?
Because that wasn't known when we did this. Thank you.
They're not on your agenda. We print, we sent them electronic and then print them.
Another document is just a copy of, correct?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
I kinda like the acknowledgement page from last year's, better ones are better than the.
So the one I put in is the seven twelve one.
Is it just a design change or?
Or do you want that, do you want the feedback piece in there? Or, or what are, what are you?
Uh, it just gives a little bit more of an elementary feel, a little bit friendly or a little bit.
Do you mind it to look kind of?
She's not gonna like that.
No, I can, I totally can. Is that what you want? Is like a little bit more friendly look to it on the page?
So I guess that's, yes. But that's, that's, that's one person's opinion. So I can, you overrule, it just, I don't know. It just seems, well, and then two, it just seems weedy undersigning the Brett, you know, it just, I don't know, it just seems a little bit more.
Right, and as an elementary child whose parent fails to sign the handbook, can get the form back, truly gonna have extracurriculars taken away? In computer privileges?
Computer privileges, yes. They're not supposed to be issued at computer at all until they sign.
Co-curricular.
Co-curricular, I don't know if we went into that.
Yours is now saying there's a.
I guess that's my only concern is if we're gonna put language.
I, 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 okay, that's my fault. I just took the seven twelve piece, yeah.
That's an acknowledgement, we have to be able to commit to following through with that, otherwise it's just words.
Will, it's not in the original one. We'll modify the elementary one that we had to fit this and we won't use the seven twelve one. Thanks for catching, I didn't get a look at that. The computer piece though is, they're, they're not supposed to even be issued a login until they have this signed.
So this plus this minus the co-curricular.
Yeah, I'll see what happens.
Do we want to move for a motion or?
Yep, we need a motion. And I cancel as presented, or as presented with the modifications as stated.
Okay. Um, based on the, the input or feedback to the handbooks, I will take a motion with regard to change.
I'll make a motion to approve the elementary handbook as presented with the modifications as discussed.
Motion by Stacy, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Post. Motion carries.
Thank you. And it's still my goal on here to have, come in here and say, there are no changes.
It's a good call.
Yeah.
All right, next we'll move into consider approval for the opening of a forward bank account effective July first, twenty twenty-four.
And I will have Caleb speak to this.
Sure. Um, in the past, we've been approached by Forward Bank, um, and they wanted to do a few fundraising for us. Uh, you remember that one of our students hit a half court shot and received five thousand dollars for that. And then they've run a few promotions in town where we'll get some of the money from people opening accounts and things like that. And part of that was that, um, that money could go into an account with Forward Bank. Um, and we thought, you know, with them coming into the town, it would be nice to just give them a little.
All right, next we move to consider Three Lakes Historical Fish Boil Facilities Request.
Okay, I'll give you a little bit of background. I received an email from Mary, um, requesting the consideration of. In the event of rain, moving the fish boil, which is scheduled on the historical grounds, um, July sixth, I believe it is. That's why we wanted to get it into this, this meeting. Um, for the use of the facilities, the school commons and the kitchen. I believe some of the cooking is already happening at the question, at the kitchen.
It will happen, yeah, the prep work.
Okay, the prep work.
Yes.
Um, in addition to that, uh, why we wanted to bring it forward here is that there was the, the entertainment of. If the, the event goes on at the historical society, there will be alcoholic beverages provided and served. If it comes into the school, that's another level of consideration. Now, um, I have shared with you what our policy is. And I thought that it was really appropriate that we have a conversation at this table to discuss what, where we stand on it. Apparently in the past, there was an event, the Heritage Festival before my time. Dave, how long ago was that? Do you even know?
Probably more like, it depended probably eight years ago.
Okay, all right, cause I wasn't aware of that. Where, that was an outside event?
Yeah, it was held on the football field.
Okay, and there was approval at that time by Dr. Carling or the board to allow alcohol on the premises. Um, I had communication with Mary because, um, you need to talk about it, but. I do have apprehension about bringing alcoholic beverages into the school building. And not at, the reason is absolutely not because of the members of the historical society or my concerns with the people there. My concerns are more outreachy. Number one, um, the perception of alcohol on school grounds. I think some of our community members would not understand and would probably find, um, difficulty. You know, with that coming into the building. Another part of that is I worry potentially about the age of students because it's a community event. So I would see that there would be teenagers or, you know, the eighteen to twenty year old group that wouldn't necessarily. But I think that this is a discussion that I'd like you to have because I foresee. This determining what other groups might ask us for in the future. And where our policy is currently written, that we have the discriminate, the, we have the discretion to make adjustments. I don't know that I personally feel comfortable about that. With that, I'm gonna turn it back to you, Alicia, and let you lead the conversation.
Yeah, um, so Terry and I talked, um, when this request came in. Um, the biggest concern is kind of setting a precedent for groups being able to bring intoxicating beverages into the school. Um, and the potential, whether it was the school's responsibility or not, if bad things happen, we have to prepare for the worst in these type of events. Um, and just general concerns over, um, the image brought to the school if we were to allow it and what it opened us up for in the future. Other input?
Terry, have you checked into the writer's center?
They're booked, usually that's our backup rain location, but they're booked, but. Cause we haven't done it since twenty nineteen and so we're bringing it back.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So it's always been there for backup in the past with rain.
I agree with Terry. I think it just looked bad, bringing alcohol. I mean, if a student. We get caught drinking alcohol in a school building and the board will allow it to happen or the school said it could happen, then. And if Three Lakes Fish Wildlife or any other organization got wind of it and they started asking for the permissions to do the same thing.
Yep, Fish and Wildlife Group.
Or any organization, I think it opens the door for, just for a host of people.
And we wanna promote an environment where community organizations come in and use the school and the resources that we have. Um, just ensuring that that comes without, um, any type of. um, just ensuring that that comes without, um, any type of outsider concerning influence.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Any follow-up questions or points of clarification?
Mary, is it something that if you guys, if due to rain, you guys need to move it to the school?
We would, we would still do it without alcohol. I told Terry, I said, it is preferred, obviously, because it's extra income. But we're fine either way and we know it was big ass, so, but all of a sudden, we're like, oh, we should check on that.
It's going to be sunny and seventy-five.
Fish boil has never been raining, uh, on the ground, so.
I mean, some people have fun drinking in the rain.
Exactly. Maybe I'll just hold there in the rain.
What about the Center for the Arts? Could it be there if it rained? 'Cause they allow alcohol to do.
Would it be a payment?
It may not be large enough depending on our final numbers.
Gotcha.
I wonder how Dave would feel about food there? Tastes good with whatever. But that's a good thought.
Do you have anticipatory numbers at all, yes?
Because it's the first year back, we're not sure. In the past, we've had over three fifty. Um, but it's kind of over a three-and-a-half-hour range, so people can kind of come whenever. Um, right now, I think we've sold fifty tickets, but it's also hasn't, there's a lot of people I know that just haven't gotten them yet, so.
Okay.
Yeah. A lot of people buy tickets closer to me, but, so.
Yep. Unless there's any other questions, if someone's willing to make a motion?
I did put in a, a recommended motion. I thought that covered both. If you're okay with that, and feel free to revise it, but.
I'll make the motion to approve the facility request for the use of TLSD Commons in the event of rain with no serving of alcoholic beverages to be permitted on school grounds. Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Mitch. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, up next, we move into Three Lakes Regional Aquatic and Fitness Center Update and Discussion. Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I've got a hearing issue. I don't hear anything in this ear. This ear hears everything twice as loud. I hit my head turn to hurt me. So, anyway, um, tell me how I can be helpful.
I would say, for, just based on looking at the presentation, so Ms. Maney shared that information with us. Kind of looking at the background of things, um, and the trajectory, there was talk in the past about use of land.
Yeah.
Um, so I guess me personally, I was looking for an update, sort of a status on your organization, um, and what your intent is going forward, um, in the interest level in, in property, in where you are as far as fundraising. Like, what does the, the project look like right now?
There is no change since we made our presentation because we're in a situation that, um, we're waiting for your response to see if this is something that you're willing to, um, belong with. And it would involve, uh, the transfer of either ownership or the use of school land, specifically, uh, the land, so-called the woods, to the south of the parking lot. At approximately, you know, in a neighborhood of five acres. Um, we have the plan that is more expansive than where we started, based upon a lot of work, interviews, et cetera. Uh, it's a very broad-based plan so that the facility would be a regional aquatic center, but much more. Uh, it would involve, uh, pretty, pretty much all the public use of what's now in the schools, the workout room, that will all move over. It's, um, to be, you know, for the public. Um, however, the context that we're presenting this to the school, the board, uh, is hopefully a partnership where the school can use this facility. Uh, but for the public, it would be, there would be, um, there'd actually be four pools, plus a kiddie pool. It would be a particular place for people who are wheelchair or handicapped. I feel very strongly about what a great possibility we have to help these people. There's, um, a place for childcare while people are, they're using the facility. It would be an extensive, suspended track for walking, potentially running. There would be a competition pool, which compared to the north, it really isn't a decent competition. So the potential would be that this competition pool could be used by, uh, schools, technical schools, colleges. It could be a place, um, you know, a site to go at, at tournaments and so on. And that on the second level would have, uh, extra, um, locker rooms. Because you can't start jamming a lot of school participants into the regular locker rooms. So there would be locker rooms on a second level with bleachers looking down so that it would be, um, people could watch the races. So, uh, there'd be a pool for, um, medical, workout, and, um, there'd just general supervised exercise. That pool would be a little warmer, it would add, um, a singular level, in other words, the, the water level would be at one level, whereas other pools might be at various levels. There'd be a recreational pool, in one word, there could be parties, you know, things like slides and games and so on. It would be a lap pool for those who want to just get in and exercise by doing laps. And, uh, there would be a, a pool that would be for a whirlpool. A steam room. It would be a separate locker room for the handicapped people with the, with the extra help with facilities that they need. There'd be administrative offices between two, three meeting rooms. But one meeting room in additional would be more like a community room, like in Voss, uh, when the United Village burned. So that whole space downstairs, which was used for dirtball and any number of things. That, how that was used to be transferred into this building under this extended township. So, um, for this to work, when you ask, how's our fundraising going at all? We are not approaching anybody for fundraising until we know that we have a viable place to be. And that's why you're so important, you know? The idea, if you think about it, I, I wrote down a, a term that is thoughtful investing. We want Three Lakes to be viable. We don't want it to be monaco, where you're, you don't want it to be an evil river. But we want it to be something that sets it aside and makes it a thoughtful investment place for people to invest money in, but also for people to invest their lives, come here and live here. Have kids here, build a school here. And so what is it that makes the, makes a town attractive? Well, one of the things is, you know, a decent facility like this would make it attractive to them. And, uh, but also very usable for older people. For people who don't care to ever get in a swimming pool, there would be other things for them. Uh, it would be a broad-based facility in terms of usage. Now, you asked, um, about the financial side of it. We know that this is a San Juan building. To pull this off is a big deal. You're dealing with what is called scale, alright, so I happen to, used to live in Madison. I belong to a very nice, um, facility there, workout facility, the Princeton Club. Very viable. I mean, they had big gyms, they had a hundred and fifty shoes, they had pools. They had two different medical facilities, UW Hospital and Merder, each had medical facilities there for rehab. It was a big deal. In our original drawings, we had medical, uh, possibility. We could still do that with this drawing, although for right now, we had Marshall Clinic somewhat lined up. But Marshall Clinic had to pull out, they've got some girls and financial issues. And, uh, but we're not, we're not closing off that. I mean, if Three Lakes needs, it would be very helpful to have some additional rehab facilities, medical facilities of some kind here. That can happen in this building, the way we have it set up, it can happen. We have to have the space, we have to have the land, we have to have the, the backing of all of our, in terms of the financial aspect. Chuck Rafferty, who's leading this, this process, is, you know, very clear that we're trying to do this without any tax dollars involved, which means that a lot of fundraising. But it also means that the school would enjoy a decent place for utilization without any tax dollars coming over, only the transfer of land. But it's not just your land that's going to be essential, the town owns a strip of land here also, that has to come into play. Previous board chairman told me that he could see no reason why the town would not cooperate in transferring this land. So the question is also, the, the transfer of the land, is it by, um, ownership? Or is it through a utilization arrangement? What's the type of thing we get worked out? The, uh, fundraising goal would probably have to be in a neighborhood of forty to forty-five million dollars to pull off the whole project. Is it doable? You never know until you try. There is, obviously, in Three Lakes, some considerable wealth. Maybe not by residents, but there's considerable wealth by property owners here. We don't know, they've never been asked, they've never been asked. But we don't feel comfortable asking until we know we've got a viable plan possible. And you've heard that viable plan, um, that you're assembling. So, um, what we need is something specific and conclusive. I would also suggest that in your thoughts and deliberations, you consider that if you decide that you don't want to do this, that you may look into doing your own project with just the pool or whatever. I know that there was some process you've gone through here in recent months with a consultant, just to, you know, what are the next steps for the school? I don't know, did they discuss a pool at all?
No, we're not discussing a pool.
Alright. So, um, I would, I would just say that, um, your, your role, your decision here is key. And I'll just throw in one more thing, at the event the other day at, uh, at the grounds of Starbucks.
Oh, the volunteer board?
Yeah, well, yeah, all the volunteers came in and, uh, it was, um.
Bill Hayes, the president?
Bill Hayes, my neighbor. He had a very nice little presentation, and he pointed out that in just a few years, I think in twenty-eight, right? We're, we're, if I heard right, we're a hundred and fifty.
Seven years from now. Seven years.
Seven years from now. We're a hundred and fifty years as a community, organized community of power. And, um, would it be nice, he said, would it be nice to have something to really celebrate? He doesn't know anything about this project, as far as I know. But he's up on the same wavelength, would it be nice to have something that helps to differentiate Three Lakes? Makes it special and, uh, viable, going forward, so. Anyway, those are the thoughts, and if you have other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. I just wish Chuck didn't grant me to.
Do you happen to know, so, looking back at, at the historical documentation, do you know when the last contact was with the town of Three Lakes? Because we, there was an issue that came in front of the board regarding the snowmobile club for Three Lakes, um, in actually building on that section of property and trying to secure deeded access, so.
I'm, I'm familiar with that briefly, but, uh.
That is passive? We agreed to allow them access through the parking lot, but I don't have knowledge on if the town board approved.
I, I can't speak for the town board, but I can tell you what I was told by a town board member, that they told me the idea. I, they're aware of this concept here.
Okay.
And I think that they're, um, if you go with it, I think they will. I can't speak for them, but I think they will, there's no reason for not. And, um, I also think that if you decide to say yes, we will get behind this project. For certain, with certainty. Then we need to come together with, uh, representatives to say, okay, these are steps that we need to be taking. And so make sure we got it all nailed down, um, and to do that sooner or later. But if, um, for us to proceed, we need to make sure we've got a place and we've got a start. You are the place and the start. We have looked in different places. This place is too ideal, it'll pass up, so that's where we are.
I have one more question. So in the original planning, in the original planning, there was intent to use the existing high school parking lot for parking for the aquatic center. Would that be something that is still in the plan?
Yes, modification, um. The original, original plan had this attached to the school.
Mm-hmm.
We've moved on from that, uh, from my standpoint, it's a good thing we moved on from. So you've got this large parking lot, and. you've got this large parking lot. And part of the land that would be utilized here would be additional parking lot, all across the front. I can't remember, my drawing has got three or four additional roads. There would still be potential, if you had a big event, that the school parking lot is still to use some. There's still an issue of where the town actually has the road to that parking lot. And I think that can all get resolved on a basis, too. Yes, there would be potential for some utilization of the parking, parking lot. And my guess is that that would be almost certain if you had large events. Otherwise, I think what we're trying to come up with is sufficient parking, new parking, that would handle pretty much the day-to-day utilization. But that's again something for us to look at and make sure. And it's also a factor of if we maybe the board parking we can't move this whole, then back, leaving our land. So I think you've got about ten acres in woods there, something like that. And what we're looking at, let's set aside about half of that and see what we can come up with. One of the things we need to deal with from an architectural standpoint, the parking lot is facing south, where this building is stretched across a very wide building. There would be a lot of wood looks on the south side to help the heat. And so, you know, there's a lot of trees and all back there, too. So you would need space for the building, plus you'd have to have a roadway back there for the fire department. And you would have to have enough space that the sun could come over the trees. And I think it's all due. There was another point, I think, Josh, you raised a point at the previous meeting, that the question, did our drawing fit the site? And you felt that it didn't. That's something that needs to be further researched. The engineering firm in Inlander said, yeah, this engineer right here and this engineer, we're big time engineers. We went out and actually measured it with tape. We thought it was going to fit. So whatever space available, we will figure out a configuration that makes it fit. Any other questions?
I guess just a couple of thoughts from me, if it's okay. You know, appreciate the vision and the goal. I mean, you know, definitely agree, you know, something like this definitely has some liability. It will, you know, I have no doubt it will be utilized. I have some, I have some serious doubts about the location, from a couple of standpoints. One, I mean, yeah, I mean, there's parking issues with our lot as it is, let alone, you know, you add more people. Two, you know, as far as that plot of land back there, you know, it's kind of the last of what we have that's on the school campus. So if we lose some of it and we decide we want to do something as a district later, we are there, we're hamstringing ourselves a little bit more, as far as that's concerned. The other thing is where it is. You know, if this is something that you want the community to have, to be outward, where people are going to see it, where they're going to either drive by it or, you know, just have simple access, I just, I don't know, there's not a good way to get to it, no matter how you get into it. You either have to go all the way down Railroad Street, it's just, it's kind of buried. I mean, somewhere on A, somewhere on Forty-Five, it just seems like there'd be better locations for something of this nature.
So I'll respond to that, Josh, one day. Those are questions we both ask ourselves. And starting with the aspect of the school, when the school sees this place as an asset for itself, I think we felt it would be a pretty big deal. But if you find that, it's not. But if we moved it right up to, let's say, up to Clearwater or someplace, I mean, you're going to have to go a long way to find a place. But you want it fits the use of the place.
It's Northern Wisconsin, everything's a fifteen-minute drive, you know. I mean, I'm not trying to bash that, but, I mean, even if, yeah, I just, I don't know. I don't see that as an issue at all.
The other thing is, is what do we use in that wooded area for our students? Right? So like, the facility sounds fantastic, you know, wonderful resource. What, at what cost to that woods? Right? There's always a cost. I agree with Josh. What property do we have left if we want to make an extension, or if we need another gymnasium at some point? It narrows our ability to increase the footprint of the school property. And completely concur. With a forty-five million dollar facility, you're going to have to have ample access and parking to bring events in there and tournaments and those things. I don't think that sharing the parking lot is feasible.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank you for at least listening. Also, I personally thank those who set themselves up for election. That's a big deal, and I appreciate it. And I would also say that if you pass a motion to say you're out, I understand, but also understand that I don't anticipate there'll be another way going forward. The reason being, we needed a starting place. And to increase the cost of this project beyond what we're talking about would be to take substantial more, we're talking billions more.
Well, you're talking about a forty-five million dollar facility. What's another, another two-hundred thousand, if it's even that much for a location, is really just, it's a drop in the bucket?
No, it's more than a drop in the bucket. It's not just a purchase of land. You've got all the utilities that you've got to deal with. The utilities are present where you are. The significant utilities. You're putting up, if you go out someplace in the country, you're into a lot of money. And it's not just the purchase of the land. But, you know, and you've got to build a parking lot, bigger, as an example. So it's not feasible to say our costs would probably, could increase as much as ten million dollars to go do it a different way. I question if it's going to be embraced, let's say, maybe not. So whatever you decide, please let us know. Either get together and look forward on this, or that it's done, we need to know when we're ready. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks for putting us all together. And again, thanks for the, thanks for the goal. And, you know, we hope it doesn't, either way, whichever way this goes, you know, I hope you don't, that it doesn't necessarily come to an end. Where there's a will, there's a way.
Can we add a show feedback? Other board members, do you want to share your thoughts at this? I mean, this is our discussion point. We don't have it listed as an action item, but I do think that a thorough and complete conversation is important, if you have any other questions or thoughts.
I mean, besides the parking lot issue, I have an issue with that big of a building, that many people, eighty yards away from a K through kindergarten playground up to sixth grade. I mean, the accesses to people becomes a lot greater.
General public, we can't control background checks, things of that nature. From my standpoint right now, the evolving of what the project was when it was originally planned to be attached to the building, I understand that. And that was way before my time or my understanding. Even doing the feasibility study to move it to the other location, that is a significant ask for the land that we have available. Ten acres is not very much. And doing our study with Nexus right now, we are finding that we are very landlocked. If we want to do expansion of even our track and field area, or parking for handicap accessible on the other side, or having, you know, for emergency services, things like that, all of that land has to be considered as potentially being used. The things that are happening in the woods right now are very important to kids, whether it's sugaring, whether it's the disc golf, whether it is nature study. With our other difficulties with our Camp Three property, that land continues to be very heavily used for environmental sciences because it is right out the door. I see the benefits of both, but I do think that it would have a very big, wide impacting effect on the immediate student body. And hence my wanting it to be extremely well thought out before we would go forward with development of this project. The second thing that I think is important is we are very much, we are so very supported by our district, our citizens. And we are in an operational referendum, which we couldn't function without their continued support. And perceptions are everything. And I wouldn't want it to, would be communicated that it's not at a cost to the district, that the district is not putting out forty-five million dollars, et cetera. But I do think there's always that potential of perceptions that, why are you supporting this when you have other needs that you're telling us about? And we haven't gone to a capital referendum in thirty-one years. And that's a real reality if we're looking at some of the other things. So it's really a weighing of, how much can we ask our public to consider at this point? And what will their appetite and tolerance be? I think this is a phenomenal project. I think it could grow leaps and bounds, and I would hope that we could benefit from it. I just don't know that our school property being, ten acre sounds like a lot, but it's really very little in the whole scheme of expansion in school facilities, if that is the proper place for it to be developed. I would say we would have to do a lot more. We had initial looking at, and plans come through with MSA. They gave us feedback that yes, it could fit with some different changes. It has increased in scope from what that original study was. That would have to be looked at again with the cost. I don't think we could go forward without quite extensive legal consultation. The initial legal consultation looked at what is not only the advice with, would we sell the property? Would we turn it over? Would the property be leased? What would happen at the end of the life? What if things didn't go well and the facility had to close? Then what does that mean to the liability of the district? That's a lot of legal, way above my understanding. I'll just be very honest with you. I'm not a lawyer. There's a reason they are. We would have to have much, much, much more information from that aspect to also be considered. Other thoughts?
I agree with you. If we do need to go to a referendum to add on to Sugar Camp or to Three Lakes, what are, what is our community going to think if we supported this big building? Are they going to be as generous and say, well, why didn't you focus on your additions you need instead of this building?
And I understand that it's to be no tax impact to the taxpayers in this project. But again, sometimes perceptions and actuality can get very blurred.
Exactly.
And I just, I really need the board to share their thoughts on this. So we can, out of the courtesy and respect for the group that has been doing this planning, they know what the direction is, so they can go forward.
I'm not an engineer, but I feel like the cost in the utilities is not hinged upon us providing land. The cost for a facility with four pools, right, is going to have a significant utilities cost, regardless if it's adjacent to a school, or if it's somewhere in the town of Three Lakes closer to those utilities.
In the presentation last year, it was seven pools, not four.
I just don't feel comfort. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. I think there has to be an answer from the township, what their plan is. Because if that has been deeded, or is in the process of being deeded to another organization, that puts more of this building onto school property. I think there's a lot more information that needs to be brought forward if it was a consideration. We also have to look at, at some point, having access to the football fields, and how our community can continue to grow into our school and having access back there, which needs parking and other things, which would take up, would that still be available with this expansive of a building on that property? I just don't think we have enough expertise and resources to make educated decisions on that. It looks, the project looks fantastic. It looks wonderful to bring a bunch of resources to our students and our community. I think it's great. I think we need a lot more for a decision point here.
Just expanding on the property thing, just even a little bit further. I mean, like you say, ten acres, okay, we get rid of five, we cut it in half. Should we want to expand again, or need something, from the district's point of view, if we can't fit it in there, if we're then tied into an even smaller area, that then puts us in the position of, do we possibly need to move the school? Which makes things even, I mean, I know I'm talking humongous picture, but something that has to be considered. I just, you know, I think with, we need to be very smart about the moves we make with the property we have left. And yes, there will be some utilization. There would be utilization of the school, of this facility, absolutely. It'd be fantastic. But I just don't think that the amount of utilization is going to be enough to factor that push into the...
Walls.
Into, yeah, what we would lose.
And I think we would still utilize it if it was in a different location, as we do now, current, you know, our resources, you know, the Y and different things that we bus our students to. But I also feel like it's not fair to continue to, I mean... But I also feel like it's not fair to continue to, I mean, how many years this has been discussed and I feel like it's not fair to anybody.
Meaning means or?
Yeah. I feel like we just, it's the same, you know,
Mm-hmm.
We've been kicking passion the same thing. Yeah.
So if this is action or discussion, I mean, can we, we can make an action, correct?
It's not listed as considered, but I believe it was listed as action.
It is.
It is.
It is listed as action, so in that case, you can go ahead and make a motion or a recommendation with a motion. You do not have to, but you can.
I mean, with the information that we have today, we could make a recommendation based on that and
That's not today, it can't come.
Right, new information could come about and our recommendation could change on the, in the future, right?
My ask would be though, what, how much more information would you want us to be gathering on behalf of the district? Because we've already invested five thousand dollars
Yeah, I don't think, I, no, I'm thinking, yeah, no, I'm saying like
Oh, oh, thank you.
They brought new information to us, like a different plan or a different idea or a different
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't, I'm not asking the district to
Got it. I misunderstood that.
That's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And that MSA study was in twenty?
Mm-hmm.
Based on current presentation and current plans, I make the motion to discontinue discussions about the partnership with the Three Lakes Regional Aquatic and Fitness Center, building on school property at this time.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Josh, a second from Mitch. All those in favor of the motion as stated, respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion carries. Mr. Williams, thank you for coming in and answering our questions and providing your presentation. We really appreciate, I really appreciate your plan, and I think it's a great idea. I think we're just not ready to give that land from the district.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for the, thanks for the thought and, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Wish you all a continued
Yeah, hope you, hope you continue to search.
Thank you.
All right, next, we will move into the school forest camp three update.
Well, since we last met, there was a motion hearing on June thirteenth with the request of dismissal of the second case, being that the project to build a trap range on the Camp Three property is no longer a reality. It has been removed from our plans. It is, had been board approved to remove it, and now with that being said, we wanted that case dismissed because it is moot. The judge did not release the case or did not dismiss. In fact, he has suggested that it would go forward. Our attorney, Ron Stadler, through the insurance company, has determined or shared that he wants it to be determined if that is in case, in fact, a sound basis not to dismiss the case, being that we don't have a project in place. So that's in the works right now. Should that not be looked at or overturned or brought forward, then it is scheduled to be a briefing and discussion for final resolve, resolution on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And that is where Judge Bloom would rule on the, whether this case is sound invalid or would be dismissed. That's what I have on that. Our attorney currently does not understand why we as a district are still being, what I'll say forced, my word, maybe not the right word, to litigate something that is not in fact a project that is planned or we are going forward with. Is there further questions?
Did he say when he would have knowledge if an appeal to the decision can occur?
He did not. He was going to look into it and file that as soon as he could, with the goal being that it would be dismissed prior to that July thirty-first event.
Any other requirements of the district, aside from monetary with representation from him? Any other requirements between now and a decision hearing on the thirty-first? Is there anything else involved in that process from a district perspective? Or will Mr. Stadler just be representing us when the judge makes a decision on it?
Yes. We are not fighting to put the trap range on that property. We are not fighting the wetland permit revocation. We are, we are looking at going forward with putting in a parking lot or a driveway to get off the road so we can access the property. And the plans right now are being developed so we can go across Highland. Wetlands wouldn't be impacted, of course, that would all be done within whatever permitting or guidelines would be required as determined. But it should have no impact as far as what we want to use the land for, which is again, environmental studies and development of trails, walking trails of that, that nature.
You wanna save everybody time, money, and energy, and I won't let you. How much more can be said to that?
I think we've been very clear, when I say we, I say the board and the district, that we are not pursuing building of a trap range on this property. We are not pursuing building of a trap range on any property that is owned by the district. It is not a project that we have discussed or are developing. We are working with our partners who are putting up the land and supporting us, collaborating with us, which I, basically is they're allowing us to use their property and facilities. It is not by the district's property or costs or support.
Do you want a future answer?
Guess we can see, wait and see.
That is all I have.
Any other feedback, questions? All right, let's move into district-related positive happenings.
Yay!
Yes, finally. Anyone? Mr. Rio?
State trap meet is Friday. You got a tea caller?
Get out of the color, clean out of your ears, yeah?
Yeah.
From the last positive happening.
Thankful there was other people there to take some of the pain. It was a good end of the year, so.
That's fine.
That last week's pretty hectic, so.
Okay. Jen?
It's summer.
You always have positives, always.
Well, Boys, Boys Regional, they made a nice showing down at sectional game, Boys Baseball.
They sure did.
Golf, obviously, they made a great showing this year, regional champs, and they, they put on a, a good show down in sectionals as well.
Oh, the girls are at Badger Girl this week. I know that, because Ava's down there.
Very cool.
The boys were last week, is that right? Boys earlier?
I'm not sure.
I feel like they went last week.
All right. Anything else?
We have good things happening within the facilities already. A lot of work has already happened, as you could see here, with the locker removal and getting ready for the upgrades and, and Three Lakes as well. And Dave and his crew have been working very hard to update our office so we can be bringing Nikki into our little space and making it work more feasibly. I think positive happenings is that we have been filling our secretarial positions and I didn't have additional personnel reports because this is just all happening like as of four-thirty this afternoon, some more hires were made. But we are filling positions and getting ready for the next school year already, so it's moving positively. And thank you, Dave, and the crew. They put in a lot of hours.
Okay. WASB correspondence updates?
Just a reminder again of the July twelfth and thirteenth Learning Symposium, if anybody is interested in that. And we have a final copy now of the WASB resolutions for twenty twenty-four, should anybody want to peruse those. I brought those in.
Okay. We're to adjourn time. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion by Stacy, second by Josh, all those in favor of the motion. Second by, I say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? None heard? Meeting is adjourned.